So welcome everybody. This is not our normal setup, but we didn't want to break down for regents and bring it back again. So be comfortable, we don't have mics, right?
Right, no.
But we can all talk loudly, so we should be fine.
Mary, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I have any character of recognition of Robert Goodrich and Nathan Holsher, Mr. Gloria, the principal of Silver Creek, and Carrie Turner, Silver Creek Transportation. And there's a podium right up here.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for allowing us to come here. My name is Gloria. I'm the principal at Silver Creek High School. This is Jake Myers. Jake is one of our graduating seniors this year. Carrie Turner, our transportation supervisor. And Lynn Crone, who is one of the bus drivers that drives many of our students to and from. As many of you guys know, we have a lot of schools outside of our regular school setting at our various programs of the Bosse Centers. All of these three individuals are students of the Bosse Centers in addition to being students at their own schools. One of the things that we have been very grateful of is the relationship and partnerships we've had with many of these schools. Our bus driver, Lynn, has spent many a time driving Jake back and forth to the Carrier Center. And these gentlemen, Nathan and Robert, have had spent many bus trips back and forth to their PTEC program at the WITIS, which involves a pit stop, which I learned earlier today, right? At the Carrier Center. So they have a long way to go before they actually get their final destination. As many of you can see, Jake has sometimes a limitation in terms of moving around, but he doesn't stop in the classroom. What you'll have... The reason we're here is because Robert and Nathan both have helped Jake out throughout the entire year without anyone ever asking him to do it. They've noticed that Jake had kind of struggled with the ramp over at Carrier Center getting on and off. It's not always the easiest place to get on and off of a wheelchair. Both Robert and Nathan have gone above and beyond to help him every single day, Lynn.
Every single day, rain, snow, sleet.
Sunshine.
This is the best time of year. But unfortunately, the year has come to an end. And we are here because we want to let you all know about that good citizenship. And we want to, on behalf of the Silver Creek Central Schools, thank you guys for your awesome role and character, and really just for inspiring us all to be better people in the community. So, thank you. Do we have a certificate to present? There isn't one here, so. I can talk pretty loud. There is a certificate we want to present and a token gift card for Tim Hortons in the... This one is for Robert. Is Robert okay? I know that Robbie and Nate are... And this one is for Nathan. Is Nate or Nathan? And once again, just thank you for letting us speak.
So, Mr. Gloria, I know that Sue Frack is representing our transportation department. We'd like to say a few words, because she drives boys as well. And then we'd like to do a photo opportunity to make everybody at home.
I just wanted to say, Robbie and Nate, I've been riding the bus for 28 years, right? And I've had some really great kids. No, not just some great kids. All of them have been really fantastic kids on my bus. But Nate and Robbie are two of the amazing, young men, not only for what they have done for Jake, okay? But what they also do on my bus. Nate and Robbie, I have a special ed bus, okay? I have three special ed students. And they get on. And Nate and Robbie are always, always helping them. Always helping them and entertaining these kids. As a matter of fact, if we have a window open, Nate and Robbie are for sure getting their hands up, making sure nothing flies out the window from our special ed students. Because we have one that is always taking his socks off and kind of throwing them out or throwing them where. But Nate and Robbie, I can't say enough about them. I really want mom and dads, thank you for doing such a great, great job.
So Jake, can you find a spot? There would be this place for a photo shoot.
Yeah.
Mr. Murphy will draw a...
Yeah, this is a good spot.
You thought you were out, didn't you? Thank you very much.
So, my name is Bob James. I've been working across the state in different districts with student groups and student leaders. And I'm a really big believer that students have a lot of creative ideas about school improvement. And it's important for us to tap those resources, ideas, getting their ideas about, yeah, some ideas. So I met with awesome staff here a couple of months ago, and asked them what they would be interested in exploring. And they said, social media, that became one of the hot topics. So, we had a meeting in April, two meetings in April, I believe it was. We had a focus group with us, about 15 students. I asked them some questions about how the impact of social media influenced learning and also social relationships. And we put together a report that we have in front of you that we'll go over in a second. But the students that are here that were part of that group have a couple of opening questions. You guys have not seen the path through your ideas as well.
So what if you use the...
That'd be awesome.
Go ahead. What do you guys think are the positive effects of social media?
We'd love to hear three different ideas.
Information travels very quickly, and...
Most of it's free. Communications. Let's get more, if there's more. Sharing ideas.
That's great. We got at least three here.
So bad videos. Awesome. I'll pick second question.
All right. What do you feel are the negative aspects or challenges of social media?
Easy to bully.
Oversharing.
Oversharing.
Looking up away from the screen. Someone else is out there in the world.
Great, awesome, thank you. So we wanted at least three. We got more than that, so perfect. So what we want to do now is we want to go through, again, we had this focus group. We gathered about 70 different ideas. Then we had to take the challenge of how to get those ideas into presentable form. So we compressed all ideas into five basic recommendations or action points. The students had input and created that as well. So we'd like to kind of go through what those recommendations are. I know that the true infrastructure changes around technology in the district happening, so it's perfect timing. We want to go through what those five action steps are. And ask you to hold any comments or any questions until we get through all five. Then we can have discussion and explore whatever questions might have relevant to those things. Again, and it's always a challenge to take a lot of ideas and compress them. So each one of these is very concentrated. It could be a long dialogue. That's why we want to get through all five, and then we'll see what discussion there is. So, go ahead.
Increase worldwide use of social media to build better connections and promotion of news and events. Research existing models, including custom apps and other options. Note, students agree that Eden is cranny using 10% of the capacity of tools.
Right. Number two is to engage students in upgrading and leading orientation and dialogue on the do's and don'ts of social media. Covering habits, self-editing, which is kind of related to what you were saying, expectations, consequences, and more. And I'll just add a little note to that. It's interesting to be with the students that I consider much younger than myself and have them talking about, you have third graders that have smartphones. They're almost the head of us in terms of the development of using the technology in their daily lives. But knowing that seventh graders come in, and there are some students here that are willing to participate, that are, you know, 10th graders and 11th graders, they have a lot more wisdom in terms of the do's and don'ts. And having them help share that with the incoming students would be a great, great action. So, that's number three.
And number three. Upgrade and publicize a timetable for fast, easy online access. Specifically wifi is what the students are talking about during and after school. Currently, right now, things rarely work, was their phrase. Explore short-term actions available to assist with number one, which was how quick could you get on social media?
I have two more questions.
Have teachers share common website for class learning. Set rules for cell use for online learning and consider designated and supported tech apps for administration.
Students join district tech team to report on student need and use, assistant upgrades, full access, availability of hardware to all, emerging new tools, and more.
Right. So I want to first acknowledge the students. They put a lot of time into helping put this together, volunteered, obviously, and were kind to come here tonight and present to you. And we discovered a lot of content that was compressed. So any recommendations, any questions, any need for clarification from anybody that heard these?
The timing is perfect, because everyone knows you're going out for capital project. And I'm sitting right in front of our architects. So, in the meantime, knowing that we can't get full access, what would you consider to be the most important? If there was one thing that we could do to get that out of any of these, the most important?
I think setting rules of how you can use it, and of like what you want to do and what you don't want to do. Because students already know some of those rules, but others, they abuse them. So you want set those.
So planning for when we can, you're right. Is there anything else you think?
Make everyone like aware of it. Because like only some people know about it, and then like things get twisted.
And there was a lot, a lot of energy in the room around, we talked about using Twitter as a platform to inform students of, you know, sports events and other events or school news that's happening. But then we got into this whole discussion that the coolest thing would be to design a specific app, so you don't have to go through anybody there that has a lot of Twitter followers. You got to go through all of them to find the one that you're interested in. So there was some discussion, maybe you guys could share a little bit about that, the idea of developing an app specific for the school.
Yeah, well, like, the good thing about having an app is that you can like really get students aware of events going on. Like during spirit week or homecoming week, a lot of kids don't know, like, whether it's school color day, or tourist Tuesday, something like that. Like, some kids just don't know. So, a lot of people won't dress up and won't participate, and that just really gets the school to its own.
It's better than posters.
Yeah.
We're done with posters.
Would parents have access to that also too? Because sometimes the parents don't know that it's tourist day or...
Yeah, it's really good to have, but it's just generalized. But it wouldn't have to be just for like spirit week and stuff. It could be for sports teams. So like if you had girls across, you could go in and select girls across, and then JV modify diversity and stuff, like you're considered schedule.
Or we could push your picture out, like after spending four weeks.
Yeah.
You could put board meeting schedule out there, too.
You could put the board meeting schedule out there. That's a great idea.
So, I'm going to give you one thing. I'm running a conference next year. I just came back from one that I'm at. If you guys download the PPRA app, company called PPRA 2015. Well, we basically design an app to run our conference. So in that, basically, it's the conference schedule, the speakers, bios, photos can be uploaded, we do surveys, like right at the end, when the speaker's done. So we're capturing immediate feedback after a speaker's done. But just, all that's right there, and it really...
And it allowed you to create an app?
Yes.
That's awesome.
I will say there's a cost to it, though. It's something about five grand.
But I'm also thinking, this is the... I'm sorry. This is the kind of thing you might be able to engage a company to come in as a project and take on this development. Because if they can develop an app that's very usable here, then they have like a product that they can market to other people. Because that actually came up in our discussion. Schools have been like, it's at least $2,500. There's got to be ways to get it done for a real, for a very minimal cost.
I think we have students that have some of these skills themselves.
That would be another way to get students involved.
So would you say your names, so that everybody knows who you are?
I'm Kelsey Preston.
Should have done that.
I'm Gabrielle O'Hough.
I'm Angelia Russell.
And we're great?
Nine.
All of us? So you're going to be here a while.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Kraus has been there from the beginning.
Up time.
I think one of the most noteworthy, and maybe Mr. James, you could talk about it, or the students could talk about it. When you first came to Eden, you really thought that the topic would be very different around social media.
I thought the juiciest thing that would come up would be something that actually didn't come up at all, was the bullying issue, the whole harassment, the whole spreading negative things over the weekend. So when students would come in on Monday in the morning, they're kind of walking under this cloud of things that were said and done and all that stuff. None of that came up. I was looking for that to come up. I thought that should really be part of the report, but it didn't. So, that reflects...
Why do you guys think it didn't happen?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Why is it not a priority?
Well, you have good people in our school. It's not mean.
It's not mean, really. Bad school. They had a lot of bullying or anything like that. I mean, it's like, it's not really like it's nice.
That was good for Mr. James.
It was great, yeah. So it was a really strong sense of community here that survived through all the, you know, chances for technology to use the negative ways that it wasn't. So that was pretty interesting. So we could focus more on constructive rather than kind of take apart destructive things. So that was really what I wanted to see. And again, I want to acknowledge the students, you know, they took their own time, not only tonight, but you know, be part of these other meetings. And they're very invested, did a lot of energy and a lot of enthusiasm. We could have used a lot more time than we really had. But we did, you know, I think we did a pretty remarkable job based on the fact that we said what's the toughest idea. And it was hard, usually a focus group is just about the findings, it's not about recommendations. But it was hard to hold them back from wanting to say, well, then we need to do this and some this, and that's what turned into the...
So the next step?
I think it's just like letting everyone know. Like, before you create it, everyone needs to know the rules. Because even though there isn't bullying, there's like a few people who have done this today. That's if we've moved that to the app. Because on Twitter, someone could like say something, and it would just go back and put it in the app. It's an app open for conversation.
Yeah, do some research on what, I'm sure that there are high schools in the United States that have school specifically designed apps. Do some research and find out what's out there. What are the best practices of schools that are using this already? And just kind of adopt those and then design something specific for Eden and stuff.
And then there's a radio opportunity as well, Mr. James.
Yeah, Eileen Buckley from WPO does a program under the umbrella name of Student Voices. And she's interested in doing an interview with some of the students. And we have to get you guys, if somebody comes back, in the next couple weeks to come in and do an interview. And in terms of the story, she's a big advocate in terms of just valuing student input into improvement projects. The strength of, one of the strengths of that for the board is that once she does these stories, they're posted online, so you can send a link to somebody. It's not like something that's on the radio, wants to disappear, it becomes an available resource. You can refer other people to listen to what the students are saying. And her whole takeout would be interesting, too. She typically works with inner-city issues to come up. The Eden years would be a different thing. So, we'll keep you posted on the next...
Thank you, Ms. Kraus.
Thank you. What's that? Sure, that was great.
We'll do it right here again.
Just let these papers down.
Is there a way to get us... Mrs. Kraus, where would you like it?
It would be great to get some of the board in as well, or even...
Sure, if you want, we can certainly turn you guys around and have the board as a background. Am I at their fur?
Oh, you...
Yeah, that's originally not very appealing, but...
Yeah, we're good?
Good evening. My name is Ailsa Moniki, and I'm soon to be graduated senior here at the high school. And I'm here with Mrs. Nick Castro to present the board and to present the board with our rain barrel and talk a little bit about it. On April 29th, the Auburn Knox Art Gallery hosted the Fourth Annual Rain Barrel Painting Contest Award Ceremony. The contest this year was the largest ever, with more sponsors, judges, and participating schools. The sponsors this year included the Erie County Department of Environmental Planning, Coca-Cola Bottling Company of Buffalo, Buffalo Sabres Green Team, Western New York Storm Coalition, and the Erie County Water Quality Committee. The purpose of this contest is to teach school-aged children about the use of stormwater runoff as a sustainable source, while having beautiful pieces of artwork that collect the water in local backyards and gardens. County Executive Mark Colacars and Coca-Cola Bottling Company's Director of Operations, Pasquale Greco, presented the awards to the winners in each category. Fifty-seven rain barrels were entered into the contest, and the categories were elementary, middle, and high school. This year, myself and 10 other high school art students worked tirelessly on the rain barrel, and we were awarded first place. We were given a $500 check to be used towards future art supplies. We were very proud of our rain barrel and excited about our first-place award, as we've only participated for two years, and have taken home top awards each year. Our inspiration this year was adult coloring books, and so we worked very hard to incorporate the simple design with a message of every draft counts. So, kind of look at it.
Are there parts of it that you like better than others, I think?
I think...
We like the whole thing.
We like the whole thing.
So what would you make the front?
The whole thing. We want a turntable. I'm proud of the kids, as I was last year. This year, I think I'm even more so proud, because Mark Colacars pulled me aside at the competition and said, Eden does the most beautiful work. And he said, we're glad that you joined us. So...
So where will you display them all?
These are actually going to stay here until September, at which point we're going to do some raffle tickets, and we are going to raffle them both off.
Last year?
Both of them.
As a fun return?
Sort of, yeah. We're going to do it through the boosters.
So you don't need to worry about it.
We got it covered.
He wants to buy some tickets.
I do.
That's awesome.
That's great.
I would like to add a thank you to Mrs. Kraus and Mr. Campbell for their service. I know that being on a board is difficult, it's arduous, it's thankless, and they deserve a round of applause.
You got to pick a side for the picture.
Ellie does pretty good pictures.
Which way do you want me to go?
Twenty pounds heavier than I was last year.
All right, so every draft do you want to tap?
Sure, right here seems good.
Thanks, Ian Doughty. Item D, capital project update. Am I right? Disconstruction. So campus is not here tonight. This is all Yelena Wright. Campus is working technically, has been really started out, it's crazy, but it will be...
Well, good evening, everyone. It's been a little while since we've had an opportunity to kind of share with our progress on the Capital Project and some other projects that we have going on. So I thought this would be a good time to bring everybody up to speed. So, I've got Mike McCarthy and Andrew Woodhouse with me tonight. They're going to be doing most of the talking, because they have all the important stuff to say on all the work that they've been working on since the vote back in December. So tonight, we're going to hit on a handful of things. We're going to hit a little bit on the long-term plan, which is part of the original building condition survey that we started in very late, I guess mid-late 2014, for the 2015 submission, which by the way, was actually just submitted to the State of Education Department just a couple of weeks ago. They just opened their website recently, and that has all been uploaded by Sandy and her team at this point in time. And we're going to touch on some of the other projects. Our long-term plan, I know you can't read it right now, but this is a document that we're using when we meet with the district regularly. Because as you probably know, like with anything else, you find additional things that you want to add to the, say, the wish list, of things that need to be addressed over time, or things that break, and you need to add them to the list. And what this list really does is it gives us an opportunity to review it at each of our meetings, which we usually get together about once a month, and takes opportunities to talk about where we might be able to fit it into the plan. So for instance, you're going to hear Mike talk a little bit about capital outlay projects, and some of the things that have been moved from, you know, one of these lists into those capital outlay projects, or items that Mr. Mark has decided to take on as a maintenance project, or other avenues that become available to the school district to accomplish some of these things. Last summer and into the early fall, the SAFE Act was coming to an end, and the school district was able to take care of some door hardening issues with money that was available from the state through the SAFE Act. Within this past year, the Smart Schools Bond Act became available to school districts. And these funding mechanisms keep kind of arising as, you know, different needs with school districts appear. And it gives us an opportunity to take the things from this list and use it as a planning tool to figure out how to best use it, so that it's not just a reaction. It's a good plan as far as what things want to be addressed by the school district. The items on the left-hand side, under Capital Project there, you'll see are all the current items in the Capital Project. And Andrew's going to kind of talk a little bit about the phases and where we stand on the phases of that project, which was voted on back in December. And the future Capital Project is really kind of what I call the, you know, the honey-do list, or the wish list. It's things that have started to come up in conversations, it's things that want to be on a list, that as new opportunities present themselves, or future projects present themselves, we've already got a good running list of things that we know that, you know, can be part of that.
Can I even just mention what the Smart Schools Bond Act, that's actually going to be something that has community involvement as well.
Absolutely.
So the district has $958,000, the state was allocated just to us. And in terms of spending that money, it does actually, it's part of it, require community, support community input. So that will be taking place, and so everyone here should realize that that will be forthcoming.
So we'll let Mike talk a little bit about some of the capital outlay projects that have been underway here in the district, and where we're at on those.
Sure, so the first capital outlay project that we're looking at here is Capital Outlay 2015. What this project is, is masonry restoration at the GLB building. So that's the work that you may be seeing going on currently, that's just about finished up. So the current schedule is to be finished with it this month. The budget for that at the beginning was $100,000. We had publicly bid that out, and bids came in a little below budget, which allowed us to take all our alternates, which was additional work that we hoped to get done, depending on how the bids came in, as well as some additional things. Our hope with this project was to get the building to a warm, safe, and dry environment. Our hope with this project was to get the building to a warm, safe, and dry environment. The roofs had been, the roofs are still under warranty now, so the masonry was the next thing that kind of needed to work in, had some cracking and some mortar issues, so we wanted to take care of that. So this was a piece of the list. It was on the current Capitol Project, so we were able to move it from there to Capitol Outlay Project to free up some space in the current project. This next slide here just shows a couple of pictures of the areas that things were being done. The left picture is the wall kind of behind the kindergarten wing. The next picture is right at the main entry. There are some cracking problems there. And the last picture is up on the roof. It's kind of hard to see, but some of the bricks are cracked and the mortar was falling out. There were some windows there that also needed new structural support on the roof. There were the gym windows on the west side of the building. Those were able to get done as well. The next project is Capitol Outlay Project 2016. This project was part of the budget that was just voted on this May. The scope that we're going to be working on during this is all at the high school. It is a masonry chimney restoration, pool wall repairs, which there's been some cracking and problem areas in there, and door replacement mainly within the pool is what we're looking at. There's the stainless steel doors that are rusted and hard to open, so that's something we're looking to take care of. The schedule for this one is to be completed by the end of next school year. The budget, like all Capitol Outlays, is $100,000. So as we define the scope more and see what that work is, we'll be able to determine if there's more work for door replacing if there's a couple additional doors that we'll be able to get done with that money. This next slide here shows a couple of those areas. You can see the chimney on the left, which kind of stands out some of the problem areas. And on the right are the pool walls. You can see there's some spacing in there and some cracked tiles.
I'm going to talk about the Capitol Improvement Project and I'm going to start with talking about the process that we've been involved with the last couple of months and it's what we call our user group meetings and it's where we meet with administration and staff that are affected by different areas of work. And we start out with an initial meeting that's strictly an information gathering meeting at first, just to gather all the information we can from everyone that's knowledgeable in the district about the certain areas we're designing. And then we go back and we develop designs and we come back to follow-up meetings where we start to develop our designs and we're currently narrowing down our design options to meet the needs of the end users and the long-term goals of the district. So the Capitol Improvement Project, it's been divided into three phases. The first phase is based on some immediate needs that were critical needs at the bus garage. There was some plumbing, some floor drains specifically that were not working, that were completely clogged in some places and it was a concern. We started with an investigation where we had a contractor come in and use a special auger drill and was able to get the floor drains moving, but we needed to do some minor alterations in the building so that the problem wouldn't reappear itself. So it's plumbing work that the contractor has been awarded construction in July and August and the bids came in on budget for that phase.
And can I refer to type? Voters voted on two days this year, so what they're actually seeing here is three phases and I think...
They voted on two propositions.
Two propositions. So Proposition 1 includes Phase 1, Phase 2, what you're seeing here. Proposition 2 is what you're seeing as Phase 3, correct?
There's some difference with it.
Yeah.
It's not strictly one.
But it doesn't equate necessarily to the propositions, which I just want to point out because people are thinking that in their mind.
Yeah. So Phase 2 is architectural-only work with the idea here is that this is work that we were able to design rather quickly and we submitted to SED and the SED review time is much shorter for this type of architectural-only work so that we can start construction earlier. It includes masonry restoration at the junior, senior high school in Eden Elementary. And actually, if you go to the next slide, it includes gymnasium renovation at Eden Elementary, rebuilding of the loading dock at Eden Elementary, which is what is shown there, replacing teen locker rooms at the high school, and also abatement of hazardous materials at all three schools. And a lot of that abatement work is actually in preparation for Phase 3. So our work, the cost estimate for Phase 2 is slightly higher than originally intended, but it's including some preparatory abatement work for the next phase. And we anticipate bidding this in the fall and for construction to occur in 2017.
Ed, could you give an example of something that was more than what we thought? Not in dollars, but in just power?
Well, it really has to do with the abatement work in crawl spaces at Eden Elementary and GLP. And so it's, they're older buildings and we needed to have an environmental consultant go in and actually test a whole bunch of different materials. So it's very hard to know in advance what work is required until we get the results of all the testing. And then Phase 3 is all the other scope that was in both Proposition 1 and 2 that was passed in December. So it actually, it does include work from both propositions. It's all the major renovation work in the project. It includes district-wide technology upgrades. It includes kindergarten renovations at GLP. It includes auditorium, the auditorium renovation at Eden Elementary. And I won't go through all of them, but it also includes a lot of athletic facility upgrades and also improving the entry for all three schools. Providing a secure entrance for all three buildings and an improved entry also to welcome visitors and make it easier for visitors to come to the building and find their way around. So increasing security and transparency really for visitors. And so where we are in Phase 3, we're narrowing down our designs and we're starting getting to design development. And our cost estimates will be updated as we further develop the design. And we're looking at the SED submission in August and then hopefully in spring, based on SED review, projected to be completed in spring and construction in 2017 and 2018. And I think that brings us back around.
Yeah, and that kind of brings us back to the long-term plan. You can kind of see where some of the items that we've talked about here kind of fall into this plan. As we start to look forward, you know, we'll start to continue to have discussions as we meet with the district on Capitol Outlay Projects for 2017 and 2018. As the project progresses, there are opportunities to continue to get other things addressed in the district as we move towards the completion of the Capitol Project. Any questions, comments?
The construction phase 17 and 18, when is it planned to be completed though? If it starts Phase 3 in 17, 18, well, when is the planned completion of that phase?
So if all goes well with the SED approval and we're able to bid it in the spring of 2017, the two major construction seasons will be the summer of 17 and the summer of 18. And construction will continue through that period between there. However, once you've got students back in classrooms, it usually goes to work that's done either second shift or quietly in places where it's not student occupied. Those two summers will take the bulk of the heavy work that is included there when you get into demolishing classrooms or, you know, areas and things like that where you need to have heavy construction. So the goal will be that everything will be back and operational for the beginning of the school year, which would be the 2018-19 school year in that fall. Usually there's some stuff that kind of trails into the fall that kind of, you know, has to still be addressed, little punch list items and things like that. But the goal will be the construction would actually be done by the end of 2018, as long as our reviews go.
December of 18?
December of 18 would be a good goal as long as SED continues to improve their review time.
So their review time right now is somewhere between 32 and 38 weeks, is that right?
Well, and it's funny, it's gone, it continues to fluctuate. You know, when we started this process, we were looking at 48 weeks and they moved almost up to 52 weeks by the time the project was approved in December. It has since come all the way down to 32 to 34 weeks. And as of last week, it's sitting at 36 to 38 weeks. So they fluctuate a little bit. We're seeing improvements. They've added staff. I know we've talked about that before. They've added staff. They've changed some of their processes and how they're reviewing projects. And we're hopeful by the time that we get into the queue in August that they've made some more improvements that will help to reduce that review time and allow us to stick to the schedule that we currently have.
Regarding Phase 3, is there a particular order that you're looking at, the things that have to be held? In other words, you can't build offices until you move people out of that. So is there a particular order that you already established in that in Phase 3?
We started to phase that out with, campus construction will help us with, you know, as Andrew kind of pointed out, you know, the reason to do more of the asbestos abatement work in Phase 2 is so that we don't have to slow down the beginning of Phase 3 because that work usually has to come before any other contractors can get in the building and obviously students have to be out of the building. So, you know, we're trying to schedule some things that allow that to happen so that we can hit the ground running. I would say that the goal for that first summer is going to, well, it's going to have a lot to do with the outside work because the more that we can get going in the first year, the less we have to do in the second work or the second year. And then we'll work through the buildings. There are some logical things that will need to happen. Like for instance, you know, where the wellness centers and things are going in this building and the athletic upgrades, it's going to require us to displace the district offices. So the district offices may have to be renovated first in order to move them out and then begin work on the wellness center. But we haven't quite gotten through the schematic design enough to sit with our construction managers and make that schedule, but we're getting close.
Is this PowerPoint available on our website?
It can be. Lucinda does have it.
We just always show it to you first before we have to go through the website and then it'll go on our Capitol Project site.
Okay, well, I guess our goal would be to come back to the board probably the end of the summer, early fall because by then we'll have had, Phase 1 should be complete, Phase 2 will most likely have been bid. So we'll have some progress updates and by then we'll have a lot more in Phase 3 that we can share with you.
Maybe September?
Yeah, I think that's usually a good time for that. So...
Thank you very much.
Great.
You can just leave it for Dave. He's coming up next.
Yeah, we'd like our fish.
All right, next is the safety hearing with Mr. Aaron.
Okay, it's that time of year, June, where we have to do the annual review of our safety plan. You do, the board has it on their laptops sometimes. I'm just going to go through and highlight some of the things that are changing that you need to be aware of. Probably the most significant thing that has occurred and hasn't changed since well before I was a small kid is the fact that our fire drill schedule is now going to change from being 12 fire drills to being eight fire drills a year and four safety drills, which will include lockout drills and lockdown drills. That's pretty significant. All of that information, all of the drills will have to be documented that have occurred. Probably the most interesting thing that will occur is that as those drills do happen, there will be more community involvement from the EMS and the fire departments because they'll, we'll have to know what their responses will be when we have those kinds of drills. So the 12 fire drills that we normally have are now going to be eight fire drills and four emergency drills and that will start to affect them July 1st. Couple of other things. In the safety plan, and they're highlighted already for you, we had to designate an emergency, chief emergency officer. And at this point, I have chosen to use Pat Mancana as the chief emergency officer simply because of what she does. That person will be the point person to coordinate between staff and emergency service personnel in the event of an emergency, all right? And I know that there are some other people like Marissa. You're also a safety officer and you and I need to touch base in one of the other buildings. So that has changed as well. The other thing that is somewhat significant is that Mrs. Anzalone has done us a big favor in contacting neighboring districts. Hopefully, we will never have the need to use another off-site shelter, but we have to be prepared. As most of you know, we have a railroad track that runs through basically the heart of Eden and there are hazardous materials that travel along that track. God forbid something happens, we're going to be moving these kids and the staff someplace. So we want to make sure that we have sheltering sites for that to happen. So I've asked Mrs. Anzalone to contact our neighboring districts, Springville, North Towns, and Hamburg. And we have not received anything from Hamburg yet, correct? And we have Lake Shore as well. So basically, we're going north, south, east, west to make sure that in the event we have to move, we have someplace to go. And we've also offered those same districts the ability to use our buildings. So you have the information. There is, as I said, highlighted areas. There's some training requirements that are changing that have to be, all has to be documented and we'll be working through that. I would assume at some point in our administrative retreat, we're going to have to talk about that because all of that will affect every staff member. This document needs to sit on the table for 30 days, so as of this evening, it's here for information. Barb, you have it, correct? It's available in the district office. It's available to the public if they want to review it.
All this information is available to the public?
Not all of it. The confidential information is not. That's part of the individual building level plans. But the safety plan itself for the district is the document that is, excuse me, is available to the public. Now, some other things that have happened that are kind of interesting. For those of you that are in the industrial environment, when somebody says to you, "OSHA's coming to visit", what does that tell you? Well, could be somebody made a complaint or something happened or whatever. Well, in the public sector, towns, schools, those kind of things, we have the same kind of people come to visit us on a routine basis. And in our case, they're called PASH. The regulations that are OSHA regulations are enforced in the public sector by the PASH inspectors. We at Eden had PASH come visit all of our school buildings and the bus garage over the past few months. And I'm happy to say that for the most part, we have gone through pretty well. They have found very, very minor things such as one of the grounding pins might be off on a porch, something of that nature. About the only major thing that we're dealing with right now is a piece of equipment, one of the lawn mowers. We have to put what's called a Rob's rollover patch knot. So we're working with the manufacturer to try and find out if we can get something for it. So other than that, the elementary school went violation-free. The bus garage had four or five little things. The high school had three or four little things and GLP had four or five little things. So what I'm saying to you is that the staff, both the educational staff, the maintenance staff, custodial staff, are doing one heck of a job to make sure that the buildings are safe for the kids and the occupants. And I think that that says a lot for the people at work here.
Steve, what were some of the small little things?
Most of it were the, were the... Most of it were the outlet type things. You know, just cord ends that were, you know, had one of the plugs that were off, things like that. One of the, in the bus garage, one of the grinder guards was missing. On a bench grinder, you have some measurements that you can't exceed between the plate and the grinding wheel. One of them was moved back and we just adjusted it while she was here. But other than that, it was pretty, pretty.
So do they find you for those?
No. What happens is when they go through and they do your inspection, they make a list and they send it to, they send it to the district, they send it to all of the unions within the building because they want the employees, because that's what they're here for. They're not here for so much the kids, they're here for the employees. They're sending it to the employee unions, alerting to them that there was an inspection, these are the violations they found, and this is the timeframe you have to make corrections for those items. And as long as you make those corrections, they can do a re-inspection, you're good as, excuse me. If you don't make those corrections, that's when the fines show up. And in some cases, it could be two or $300 a day. So it can be somewhat significant and Mr. Murphy would go crazy.
Do they give you warning that they're coming or they just show up?
Yeah, there's no warning.
Initially, they just show up.
Okay.
Okay? And it was kind of interesting because they showed up first at GLP and the day they showed up, Lauren was running.
The Christmas breakfast where I make omelets.
There you go!
Extending for.
I have rubber gloves on the fire detectors.
Yep. So there was a, there was a mad gash. There was a mad gash to do things. And while Brenda was removing one of the gloves, the fire alarm goes off.
Oh. Because she jumped up to grab it and hit it.
So actually, what ended up happening is...
I very aggressively said, "This will not enter your report."
Yeah. The woman was very nice about it and she is contacting me usually a day ahead of time before she comes.
Now.
Because she realizes. Exactly. And so, you know, it's worked out. And she really has been very easy to work with. And they can make your life miserable if they want to, but they're really here for the safety of the employees and they did a good job.
You just see them like any good Polish law would.
Okay, one of the other things that I wanna just touch on real briefly is that we are working on some other things to make the safety plan, which obviously if you look at it, is a pretty large document, a little easier and comfortable to work with. All right? So I'm working with a company that produces something like this, if we want a printed version. And basically, it's a flip chart that has all of the pertinent information in it. And perhaps instead of this or in addition to this, an application for a smartphone. So that in the event of an emergency and you're caught, and you can't find this, you certainly could have it loaded on your smartphone and be able to just go where you need to go and look at what you need to look at. So those are some good things that are happening. We had our normal safety committee meeting with the insurance company people and they were happy with what they heard and where we were at. So from a safety standpoint, we're in fairly good shape.
Dave, can you touch on at all transportation, what they're doing in conjunction with the town?
Okay. Transportation, what's happening down there? The thing with the safety side of school districts is that buses have not been thought of as one of the important areas that need to be addressed. So what Mary has done is she's contacted the town, the police department, the EMS, after having some minor accidents this year, to talk about how are we going to respond? How are you gonna respond? How can we help each other so that you're not taken out of service for a long time? We're able to deal with the kids and get the situation handled and get the buses back on the road and the kids back in the schools as necessary. So part of the safety plan is going to be updated to reflect some of the changes that they have talked about. All right? So I'm working on that with Mary to make sure that it's somewhat vanilla and not so specific that should somebody pick up our safety plan and say, "Well, you didn't do this," but it's easy enough to say, "Well, we did the essence of what the plan sets." And that's what we wanna accomplish. All right? So it's a good thing. It opened up that line of communication with the town services and emergency service personnel. They got to see a little bit of our side, we got to see a little bit of their side. So it's all good.
And I would just add to that too because the town police and town EMS, who've been very generous with their time, already met with all the bus drivers, maintenance, once this year and will do it again in the fall, on opening day. So they have been very great to work with, so.
All right. Excellent. All right, so if anybody has any other questions, I'll be happy to help.
Under the drills, have they specified, I know right now there's a certain number you have to have by December first, and that, have they specified that with the change in the format?
No, that hasn't come out yet. I'm waiting to basically hear from facilities planning because there's people that basically have constantly looked at the number of fire drills and made sure that eight occurred prior to December and the rest of them occurred after. And they have not come out with anything. Part of what happens is when something happens at, you know, the governor's level, somebody gets this idea, they don't think about who has it gotta filter down to to make sure that everything gets documented and all the, you know, the t's across and the i's are done. So as soon as they send me something or put something out, I don't know for sure. But I'd imagine that probably two of those drills are gonna be, you know, in the spring and one will be in the fall. I think that's probably the way it'll go.
And they probably just split up the lockdown or don't you know?
No, I bet they don't.
No. We're all waiting here. All right? Okay, thank you.
Hey, before we move on, we'd just like to introduce our new student board member, Maureen Bender. She's here tonight shadowing Liz. This is Liz's last night, so we'd like to welcome Maureen and say, "Good luck."
Chill.
Good luck.
Chill.
I'm so glad. I keep forgetting her all year long. I'm reading my script.
As a reader, that was a good recovery.
All year long.
You get past the notes a little bit.
There we go. So we'd like to say goodbye to Jill and welcome to Maureen. And Maureen, why is it that you get the honor of sitting with us all next year?
Um, sorry, I'm student council president.
Student council president next year. Very nice. Welcome. Okay. Item five, request to withdraw specific items from consensus items. Item five for six, routine actions approval consensus items that upon, or recommended motion that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum A through M.
Second?
No, I have a question on M first.
So do you wanna pull on?
Yeah, let's pull on.
So going back to that, item five, request to withdraw specific items from consensus items we're withdrawing. So now, recommended motion, so item six, recommended motion that upon the, that the following consensus items be approved as listed in administrative memorandum A through L.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, extension of motion period. End of discussion.
Okay, so item M is appoint supplemental activity advisors and coaches for the 2015-16 school year. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following personnel be appointed as supplemental activity advisors and coaches for the 2015-16 school year, provided these appointments will not be effective and service to the district pursuant thereto shall not be until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Steven Pierce, APEX co-coordinator and teacher advisor for ELA. Scott Minton, APEX co-coordinator, and Carrie Hamlet, APEX teacher advisor for social studies.
Second? Discussion. Okay.
Okay, so the question that I have is, well, I guess it's, there's a couple. There's three people for this APEX program. There's two coordinators, two separate teachers. I'm not really quite recalling, if you can just remind me, how many hours were, do the teachers have to teach?
So what the board approved a few months ago, I'm not sure which board, which meeting it was, was an APEX coordinator, but this is being split between Scott Minton and Steven Pierce, so it's not a double stipend, we're splitting those stipends.
Okay.
And the advisors, the APEX teacher advisors, there are three hours per student, one for every subject, so English, math, and social studies. So in this regard, what will happen for payment is Steven Pierce is being, there's a motion for Steven Pierce to be approved as the APEX teacher advisor for ELA. So what this means is right now there's a need for at least one student from home at ELA, three hours per child. He may do more than one student, he may just do one. And then carry the same thing for social studies. So it's $25 an hour, $3 max for, three hours max for every student and to a total of ten students max.
Okay, so they're, oh, so it's by the hour, it's not like...
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I guess maybe the old program that we had was just one teacher for all the subjects.
It was. And it was discussed at the department chair meetings and through ETA that to take a look and we'll be OSHA's to try to create a program that was more content specific for students within each of the areas. And so that's the program that they came up with and approved a few months ago.
Okay, and then why do we have to have a co-coordinator? I don't think, well, I'll just ask. Scott doesn't have any teaching qualifications, correct?
And he's not teaching.
He's not teaching, but why do we have to have two coordinators?
They decided to split it. So it's prorated from this past year, this is a 15-16 school year, and so they decided to split the coordinator position made for Bill Lillie. Bill Lillie entered.
Second?
No.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, extension of motion period.
Right, this is the approximate position, a time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements and respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign a attendance sheet, designate their representation status, for example, parent, teacher, class driver, chamber of commerce, etc. There's a two-minute time limit.
Hi, I'm Sushal for Elementary Computer Lab Teacher. I was not a doctor for presentation today, but I just wanted to take my two minutes to thank Mr. Graff, Mrs. Rammakers, Mrs. Karsten, Mrs. Anzalone, and the sixth grade team for helping to support Career Day. We had fourteen presenters today, parents and friends of the sixth grade teachers that came in, presented to our students, which was the culmination of our career unit. Three years ago, Joanne, we began teaching careers to kindergarten through sixth graders. We had been doing sixth grade for a while, but we increased it to kindergarten fifth grade. So the Career Day is kind of like the graduation day of their career learning through the business department. So I just have some pictures that I brought to show you of some of our presenters today. We had hand therapists, we had postal inspector, a drug enforcement agent, we had a K-9 officer, we had the Eden Emergency Squad, we had the town supervisor came in and talked to the kids about laws and how government works. It was a really exciting half thing.
And radio, through radio.
Oh, Brett Allen was our keynote speaker, W-Y-R-K personality, came in and talked to the kids about the importance of making school what they want it to be and making it interesting. And if they're bored, it's their own fault. And he was really motivating to the kids, really. He, it was wonderful. The kids were just engrossed. He brought in his computer program that he uses on the radio show to mix their music and their voices and their sound effects. It was a really great day. So I'm just gonna pass these around and they can get left at the end of our bar and turn them into thank you cards to send home to each of our presenters.
So it was a wonderful program. The kids didn't have a lot to say about it. It would be great to get some testimonials from them. And I know it started out with Joanne doing a couple of years ago and this is going to...
Actually, sixth grade has had a Career Day for many years, probably a good ten years, I wanna say. They have been doing Career Day down there by inviting parents and friends and family of the sixth grade teachers. I think it began with a guidance program that Tammy Orcot had established. And it kind of has morphed into six weeks we spent investigating self-interest in careers in computer lab in sixth grade. Every student K through five has done a career packet, learning about themselves and learning about careers of people that they know at home or going on websites, depending on the grade level. So Amy Sullivan works with the K through two computer lab with the careers for them. We save the career packets. And in sixth grade, when they're done, they come up to Mrs. Rammakers and then as they move into the business classes up here, they revisit those and look at themselves and how they've changed and how they've grown and learned throughout the years. So they keep doing it.
Did everyone want to become the next superintendent?
No, everybody wants to be a professional athlete. I did not have a professional athlete.
Because there was a coach.
But there was a hockey coach.
Yeah.
Mrs. Meredith husband coaches for Predonia. And I love when he speaks to the children because he tells them, "If you are not athletically motivated, if you are not scholastically motivated, I don't want you on my sports team." He wants a well-rounded student. He's very frank with the kids and I really like when he comes in and speaks to them. So, yeah, we had a great time. And on each picture, it just tells you who and what they did, with a psychologist and a journalist and college professors. It was really exciting, lawyers. So, yeah, so if you have any questions, you know how to go. Thank you.
I do. Anyone else? All right. I'm gonna move on to the business. Okay, resignations. The recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of recent teacher, Ashley Martella, be accepted effective June 7th, 2016. Board of Education and Administration wishes to thank Mrs. Martella for her eight years of service to the district.
Second? Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, extension of motion period.
Item B, appointments. All appointments will not be effective in service to the district pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance of statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Here are the recommended motions. Number one, extended appointment of part-time elementary teacher. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Amy Sullivan, be appointed as a .5 FTE part-time elementary teacher for pre-K, effective September 1st, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2017.
Second? Discussion?
Amy is here.
Hopefully, all of you have. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, extension of motion period.
We was here. Item two, tenure appointment. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Susan Wilhelm be granted tenure in the social studies tenure area effective July 14th, 2016.
Second? Discussion?
I have a question. Would it be backdated to what?
The tenure is granted two years from the date of appointment, which is July 14, 2016. For new hires, it would be three years.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, extension of motion period.
Congratulations. So we're gonna redo one more motion for Sarah and then Tom would love to do a photo shoot with Amy and things too. Number three, appoint extended leave substitute that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Sarah Fiorella, be appointed as an extended leave substitute teacher, effective May 23rd, 2016. Number three, appoint extended leave substitute, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Sarah Fiorella be appointed as an extended leave substitute teacher, effective May 23rd, 2016 through June 24th, 2016, salaries $90 per day.
Second discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Substitution motion period.
Is Sarah here?
I did not tell her to go, that's my fault.
No, it's Sarah, fine.
She is still the first, her third long-term for us now.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Become very important in all of our technology.
Yeah.
Item four, appoint staff development trainer and substitute. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Susan Schnacher be appointed as a staff development trainer, and Randall Pearson be appointed as a substitute staff development trainer, not to exceed .10 FTE combined, effective July 1st, 2016 through August 31st, 2016.
Second discussion. Is this the type of agreement?
Nope, this is not, this is what, this is a grant that we got this summer, and Sushal has been doing it solely during the summer, and this should be training.
All in favor? I oppose. Substitution motion period.
Item five, appoint summer school speech-language pathologist. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Colleen Griffin be appointed as a speech-language pathologist for the summer school program, not to exceed 8.5 hours, effective July 5th, 2016 through August 12th, 2016.
Second discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Substitution motion period.
Point summer school transportation personnel. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following personnel are appointed for special education, summer school transportation, field trip drivers.
Reading all of these.
Just A through O.
A through O.
Second discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Substitution motion period.
Item seven, appoint summer computer AD cleaner. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Brandon Nabel be appointed as a summer computer AD cleaner, effective July 1st, 2016, through completion, but not to exceed $3,000, salaries $9 per hour.
Second discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Substitution motion period.
And Brandon is here tonight.
Can I just ask a question? How do you, I mean, like, are you taking these computers and stuff apart and cleaning them? What, what are you doing?
So I don't know, like, the complete, I don't know the complete job, but I know that that's, I'll be, you know, doing a lot of taking computers out, cleaning them, bring songs and stuff, and then turning them back in the universe.
Can I bring mine in?
Yeah, he was warned that it's a very grimy job. We follow around all of the rooms, all of classrooms are completely emptied. We come in, take the rooms out, our, our stuff out, cleaners come in, clean the room, we put it back in, we clean it, and we are required to inventory, do a physical inventory every summer, so, big, big part.
I'm surprised how Dory those computers can come out. He's one of our graduates that might be able to make it happen. That's why I saw him following the Pudon machine, he's one of the guys.
Item C, approve change in hours. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the hours for speech-language pathologist Dana Fazalari, be reduced from 15 to 41.5 for the 2016 summer school program, effective July 1st, 2016 through August 12th, 2016.
Second discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Substitution motion period.
Approve bus use for Eden Town Recreation Field Trip. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, transportation via school buses be approved for the Eden Town Recreation Summer Field Trip to Splash Lagoon and Eardie PA on July 27th, 2015.
Is that back in time?
Oh, yeah, 2016.
Someone developed the time machine? Second that. Great deal. Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Substitution motion period.
You got it, Mark, you okay?
Yep.
At least you're consistent.
Wait, where?
No, no.
Second and excellent.
That's, that's.
That's correct.
That's not a field trial.
I didn't even deal with one of these things, or two, two.
I just have trouble with the one. All right, item E, approve bus use for Eden Kinder Care. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, transportation via school bus be approved for Eden Kinder Care Summer Field Trips.
Second discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Substitution motion period.
Item F, approve EA, EA essay contract. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Eden Administrative Supervisory Association Contract be approved, effective July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2020.
Second discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Substitution motion period.
Item G, accept donation of electric stove. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a donation of an electric stove from Key Fronds Act valued at $150 for use in the faculty room at the elementary school building be accepted.
Second discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Substitution motion period. Thank you.
Approve non-resident tuition rates. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, non-resident tuition rates be established annually by December 1st for the following school year. Rates for the 2016-17 are set at $8,546 for grades K through 6, and $8,218 for grades 7 through 12.
Second discussion.
Why is there a difference?
It's just the state sets the rate for both. I can't tell you this, why the state does what the state does.
It must, we are not accepting students K through 6 for the 16-17 school year, we are accepting students in grade 7 through 12 right now.
Is that the highest possible rate you can go?
Yes, we cannot go over the state maximum for non-resident tuition math set. And so I can't do that.
The state said the rate is good enough.
There you go.
Mine might be good enough, but it's, unfortunately, we have a little gap.
It's never going to be. All in favor? I oppose. Substitution motion period.
Approve change order. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a change order for $5,480, bringing the total to $74,743, be approved for the 2015-16 capital outlay project to complete an additional 274 square feet of masonry, repointing on the exterior wall of the cafeteria at GLP.
Second discussion.
This is just in addition to what was already done, you already approved the contract for $69,000. This was for additional flashing work being done. It still keeps us well within that $100,000 range that we have.
All in favor? I oppose. Substitution motion period.
Item J, approve appropriations increase. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2015-16 appropriations be increased by $4,913.87 to $27,105,653.60 to account for increased revenues.
Second discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Substitution motion period.
Thank you to all of us.
Item two, superintendent's report.
So you may have seen in your package from me the number of retirements for this year. I wanted to thank Mark for taking note from me with the speeches at the retirement dinner Thursday night, but all together, including the brand-new retirement of Astrid Gutierrez, which will come in July 6th, it totals to 210 years of experience. So Rita Schmidt, Sue Engel, Kathy Funk, Mark Bona, Ellen Kindley, Miriam Mandiak, Rosemary Peters, and Patricia Seleski, and Astrid, and Astrid Gutierrez, 210 years. So I think that's worthy of an honor. Experience for sure. Secondly, on the Raiders' Respond Report, thank you notes continue to be coming in, which is really nice. I would say in the past, we probably haven't had as many, but there were well over 88 projects that were done, some were huge, some were small, some were very visible, and some were not visible at all, but certainly it's a, a well-received and well-appreciated program that our students and our staff do for, for the people, the residents in our community. From an elementary and a GLP perspective, and they have it pretty much down the way they like it, there were some new ideas going on, like their, like their run, that was in the front page of Hammer's Sun, which was great. So thank you, Amy, if you had anything to do with that. For the 7 through 12, we're going to continue to take a look at how we can do it better. When you have that many kids going off in smaller groups, and it's just, it's more of a management piece than it is, and you have classroom teachers to do it. So we're going to continue to figure out how we can make it easier to manage, make it safer for our students, not have students running in the back pickup trucks in our parking lot, and, but we're not going to let it go. So I just wanted to let everybody know, and thank you for your support on that. In terms of the superintendent, art collection winners, I have not seen the pictures yet, but I will soon, and these are the four students who, who have been chosen for this year, and a Whitman for grade 12, Eliana for Mermina for grade 7, Calista Schreits for grade 4, and Braden Waring for grade 2. Lisa DiCosta did an awful lot of work last year in trying to do some innovative work on the superintendent art collection, and with a grant from the Eden Community Foundation, will be taking this work out into the community at some point. So I wanted to thank her for that, and I'm certainly going to keep you in mind, and with updates when that, when that hits the town hall or any other place by Murray and the district. Technology story, I wanted to read a story for you, this comes from Liliana Rouse, she is in class with Mrs. Engel, and this is her story. She says, "Mrs. Engel has a smart board that she named Fester. They don't always get along well." This year is really cool. You can draw on him, and write, and do other cool stuff on him. Mrs. Engel uses him for everything, math, reading, anything that you can do on a computer, maybe even more. She also uses him for reading our immigration unit. Fester is the best smart board ever, and we all love Fester." So they just wanted to say thanks to the board for the initiatives last year with the technology. I heard about Fester, that she was, he was sitting on the always going down. In terms of an end of the year report, just briefly, I think it would be really great to share with you from, from different department and different building perspectives, and David, I know you were going to say yours, so I'll probably just come over to you for a moment and talk about that, or maybe you already shared it, but when I asked the administrators if they had one or two highlights, of course, they all had more than one or two from this year. It was a very, very productive and positive year, and, and I would say that a lot of that has to do with the Board of Education, and so I thank you, along with the staff and the students. From an athletic perspective, for sure, it was a unified basketball. Everybody just really felt that that was just, just very heartwarming. From a curricular perspective and a partnership with the town, it would be the community garden of Eden, along with our elementary garden club, and if you drive past GLP, you can see the plants coming up and blooming, is it cabbage?
Lattice.
Lattice, yep, and some of them look really, really big. And that was an initiative with Cornell Cooperative, so we love that partnership, and also with Senator Gallivan. For the junior, senior high school, they had a number of fundraisers, I think they're the one that meant the most to them, again, in terms of that giving, it was Tractor Days, a fundraiser for Dylan Williams, who lost both his legs in the tractor accident, along with their unit's blood drive, so two fundraisers. For transportation, they're incredibly grateful that they, for first time in many, many years, have enough substitute bus drivers, they have five now, to get through all the sport seasons. I haven't heard Marissa frazzled once because we're out of bus drivers, and so...
Have to have buses as well.
And buses as well, yeah, yeah, so just to have the buses to be able to do it. For GLP, it was their pre-K playground, and their gym upgrades, and also the STAR boards, which Fester is one. And then David certainly mentioned the rep, the passing of the referendum, the maintenance, and then the capital outlays, which is a big difference to the district. A lot has happened, just a few, I will give you an entire list, and I'll post it on our website of all the wonderful things that have happened in the district this year. But it's, and, and for me personally, I would say I'm incredibly excited, encouraged by the leadership of Amy Stager moving forward on the board cert, the National Board Certification Program, with eight, almost nine of our elementary teachers jumping on, which would be quite exciting for you. We've talked about this. So I just, again, wanted to say, for the Board of Education and for me, a token of our appreciation for Jill, we'll be coming to her in the mail, because not here for her tonight, but we'd love to take a picture with you with Mr. Burns, too, as well, for the paper, and we're just always so grateful, and I appreciate you sitting with Maureen for tonight, and Maureen sitting with you so that she can learn. Is there anything for the board that, that you just want to say before you go?
It was really interesting seeing everything like happening, I didn't know how like this works, but, yeah, next year, Maureen will be a lot tougher than I am.
So thank you.
Somewhere in the light.
Somewhere in the light. You like the books?
Sure.
Books are good. Oh, your battery. It's for six days.
What's up?
Good, thank you.
We want to offer a column if you wasn't supposed to be here, okay?
I think I will offer a, a tax collection. I was going to be nice, Tom, you know Zach?
My cast was lower than that. Now we're into the board report, tax collection.
Okay, well, boy, I'm glad you're back. I'm back, so we'll just move right on. Okay, so anyway, so we're not for tax collection, we spoke last board meeting about this, as to which direction the board would like to actually move it in terms of tax collection. And I did send to the board president just a, a rough estimate as to whether it actually costs if we were to actually do it in-house. And as we looked at the cost of it, it was roughly just under $12,000, and that actually included the focus. And right now, we actually spend about 15 all told, including the town hall. So it's a little bit less than what we would actually pay right now. However, as I stated at the last meeting, I don't, in my opinion, I don't know if it's a good time for us to bring it back in the house. And the biggest reason for that is with the change in STAR, and how that rebate is actually going to work this year, it's going to be a change for a lot of homeowners. So we're going to get a lot of complaints from homeowners, new homeowners, who no longer will have a STAR rebate actually applied to the tax bill. So what they will have to actually do is put it onto their tax return form, which is going to be just a sea change for, I think, everyone in the state. So if we bring it back in-house for doing a year where it's not the first time this actually happened, it would make a lot more sense to me, I would assume, with any new system, you're already going to have some glitches, it's just part of life, but to do it when we're already going to have people already accept with the district, just for something that's beyond our control, to me, is not the best timing of that. That being said, obviously, whatever you guys would like to do, I did call your... I did call Erie County. I asked them what the steps actually are in terms of timing, whether or not we could actually meet all these timing challenges prior to September 1. I'm not sure. And even Erie County said, "We're not sure as well." That being the case, so obviously, Erie County generates the bills. We do need to get a tax collection software system of some sort. No, we didn't budget for it this year, which is another reason I would recommend, if you're going to look at it, you might want to do it next year so we actually budget for that portion of it. The software files needed to be loaded into a system. We have to match every bill, fold stuff, send out by mid-September. And then we don't have a way, at this point, to collect credit cards. So we are also going to have to deal with that issue because right now, the optional credit card is available to taxpayers. This is our third year of doing credit cards? Second or third year? And to take that away, I think we'll have more complaints as well. No, we didn't do it on the first year.
We didn't budget for splitting the software with the town?
No, we have not because no decision's going to make it one way or the other. So nothing's budgeted on that. But taking a look, on the positive side is in terms of hours, Erie County's not recommending that we change any of the hours from last year. And all the hours from last year are during the daytime. So from that perspective, we don't need to buy a lockbox. We don't need extended hours, anything different. At least, they would recommend keeping that as similar as possible so the end user doesn't see a whole lot of change. So the credit card would be the one change we're definitely going to do. And two is just where they got it offered. We still think our staffing costs, because you can't double dip, you can't force them doing their regular job and receive a stipend for doing this. So if they're doing this, then their day hours where they have to move, so it's not at the same time. Those were some of the things that they highlighted. So the biggest step would be to find a tax collection and software company that would be willing to do that and then find the money after you go there.
If we didn't go there.
If you don't go to town. So last, if I recall correctly, that we talked about last time is, do we bring it back in-house? Do we sign a one-year extension with the town? Do we sign a multi-year extension with the town? If it were options one or two, we weren't looking at splitting the software costs with the town. If we're option three, then we're investigating, tell our auditors about splitting the software costs with the town.
So are we looking for a motion tonight?
We need.
They would appreciate something from the town.
I'm going to. Okay, I'll make a motion that we extend one year with the town and do further research about bringing it back in-house.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Substitution, motion, period.
So, Mr. President, then, would you have that conversation, then, with the town's advisor, let her know that for this year we were not going to be splitting up the software until it's only one year? Would the board want to entertain it next year to possibly split if you decide to go into a multi-year?
I think it's only fair to share some of the expense of the software.
If we don't bring it back in-house.
If you don't. And you go on multi-year. I mean, that, to me, makes sense.
Just bringing it in-house and saving several dollars, saving money up, of course, the board, but it seems that we may make it much more complex.
The other thing to think about, too, Tom and I talked about this the other day, is the impending capital project. And so there will be some disruption in the capital project moving forward. The office hours for a secretary, in this particular case, Kennedy Doppson, unless it was someone else who decided to do it, but also retail in a new office, somebody being able to buzz in, pass within normal hours, and be the district officer. My feeling is that we need to explore that that's going to look like a problem.
We have a year to look at it to see what we can.
Well, this one-year extension, didn't we tell the town last year that we would do a one-year extension investigative last year?
Yes. You're pushing on down the line, yes, that's correct.
We didn't do much investigation last year, did we? We're busy.
I think the reason part of that is that the conversation of bringing it in-house is coming up. It's something that we feel that we want to do. But then every time we do the research on it, the savings on it is less and less each year, and the problems are more and more.
Other districts do do it in-house, right?
Some, not all. Spring rolls doesn't do it anymore.
Some do use things. And we actually used to use Bank Here, but now they're charging fees, and they've gotten out of municipal banking business.
I mean, the cost here that you mentioned earlier, I mean, is there, I'm assuming there's companies out there, like Paychex or someone like those ones that will process this for us, right?
I haven't heard of any.
I was actually taking it in-house and doing it.
I haven't heard of anyone doing that, for any district. I mean, I can check and see, but I have not heard of a Paychex type of company doing that. It's either working with a bank, a town, or in-house. Those are the only options I've ever heard of. I can check and see.
A lot of towns do it because they substitute it there.
And they already have a built-in system. So Mary Go's Office, they already have an office that does it. So they're set up, they already have the software, which is, I mean, they have upgraded the software. So they already got the systems in place. So maybe we can investigate that prior to the end of December for following year, because that will give us time in the budget process if we were going to bring it back in-house or if we're going to do a multi-year contract and to make sure that if we're going to split the tax collection, that's a possibility as well.
Or if one of the goals of the town and the school is to share what they can and not to do the great services, then it's something the board intends to discover here as well.
For the town, could I ask you something? We could do it for. Call competition? I don't think we've done that one.
And we have some certificates of appreciation for Patty Crowe for her service in the board for the past three years. So I thank you for serving this community. Great job. They have one for Cal, but he told me he'll have to be off your turn.
I have one more picture?
By the books? Here's Dad's.
It said 4%. Why? Yeah.
Can I just say a couple of things?
Sure.
When Sandy was talking about Raiders Respond, the visual things that happen throughout the community, definitely more people notice. The mural that Lisa and her students did, absolutely gorgeous. If anybody hasn't seen it, you definitely need to go and check that out. A really nice letter of thanks came from the farm, and just they're greatly appreciative. And want to just make sure that, you know that you are greatly appreciated, Lisa. Thank you for all that, all your students, great talent. Also, the sign that the technology class, oh, that's just.
The two signs coming into the district.
Correct. Very, very nice. I love just driving by that every day and seeing that. So that's really nice.
And then we just recently got a letter from the Food Pantry, too, for the work at GLP, which you haven't seen yet. So, yeah, you're right, it makes appreciation by everyone.
Yep. And then also, too, I just, being on the board has definitely been enlightening. The last three years have definitely had their ups and downs. I've met some really great people, teachers, students, administrators. We live in a great community. Have fun. Have fun, Don. I guess my word of advice would be, I ran for the board on an issue, not a smart move. But that being said, it really opened my eyes to how the school is ran. Budget season sucks, and it's really no, no fun because we don't have any money. And it's just so thin. It's really sad that the students really have to suffer. Our teachers do so much for their classrooms, give so much of their time and energy and money, their own money, for the advancement of our kids. And that's, I greatly appreciate that. And I think, I'm very thankful that I live in this community. So I know there's not a lot of teachers here. So if the ones that are here, you just let everybody else know. I greatly appreciate it. And I'm sure the rest of the board does also, too. Just kudos. Thank you.
Thank you.
You could probably send out an email through your address to the board. Let's wait and help drop you from there.
Okay.
Suggestion.
I don't type well, but okay.
Before we move on to future dates, kind of nice segue from what Patty was saying. I mean, the budget time has been really stressful here. Funds are still low. I think I said this at a previous meeting. Many districts are seeing positions being reinstated, and we're still not there yet. I think there are great things happening in the town on the central business, something, something, what is it? Committee? But anyways, it's a committee through the central business capital, I can't remember the whole title. It's very long. But there's phenomenal things happening in this community that I think are going to help with the long-term preservation of the school district. But I think we still have a lot of short-term hurdles to get through. So I keep mulling over advocacy and how can we get the word out? And what is it? I mean, it needs different things with different people. When I am speaking about advocacy right now, it's just, I'm very tunnel-visioned right now with the financial advocacy part of it. Because I think that will help the bigger picture in the long run. And I think it'll help not just the students and the teachers, but I think the community at large, lessening the burden, et cetera, et cetera. In the past few years, in my attempts to participate in advocacy, the one hurdle that we have is finding bodies to help. There's only, everybody's so busy. Everybody's got commitments with their own families and their own kids, and I absolutely understand that. So I was, I'm envisioning signage that can be easily transported from event to event. It's not little, big, so, but simplified, not paragraph after paragraph of why it's important and what we need. So I think, you know, I think we spoke before about four or five biggest issues that we're facing. My hope is to kind of solidify those, get some input as to what the teachers and the students are feeling, and kind of put that up there so people understand why it's important. And then give them avenues. If we can man things with a tablet so people can easily just, you know, nice, it has a really nice, you just literally press it, here's the issue, take your name and address, you press it, and the faxes go out on your behalf, which I think is super easy, and I love it. But if we can, you know, for those days that we can't have it manned, have someone there with the tablet so people could easily just say, what can I do? Can do it right now so I don't forget by the time I get home? But at least something visual so people can see it over and over again and understand the impact that it's having. So I'm looking for input from the board, from anybody about what I, my hope is to get the signs up and done by the end of the summer so that we. So you might be able to use the social media aspect because it'll help a lot of anybody that's here as well that may help. So I'm going to start, I already started to, like, sketch some things out. I'll put it out.
It's probably a terrible sight, so.
Well, these will be in-house. They'll just. They'll be in-house, just so people understand. Because I know when people attend events here, it's not just parents, it's grandparents, it's other people in the community, just so they know. I would like to.
But not even like a booth at the Core Festival, which I think.
It's not a good idea.
About just how much the state is pretty.
Take it away. Again, are you going to man it?
I could do it then.
He's got it ready. Ready to carry it. There you go. Writing it down, well, it's being recorded, so. But that's, no, that's a great idea. And that might be a nice, like, starting point for this whole thing. And I know people are sick of hearing it. I'm sick of talking about it, but it is what it is for us. And we still have to find a way to get the word out, even if it's just within the community. Email, text, whatever.
Question, question, Barbara? Is this your question? In terms of new board member coming on down the side, could you just share for the board what that process looks like? You won't be here for the year.
No, I won't be here.
She won't be here. So in terms of the oath, what did you?
Oh, I was going to do it tonight after me. I brought the cards with me.
I'm now repaired. Already done a month. Can we just do it right now?
Oh, we can.
Does it take pictures?
Sure, why not?
Can we return for? You might. Yeah, do that.
Want me to go over the future dates? Annual reorganization board meeting Wednesday, July 6, 2016, 7:00 PM in the junior senior high school cafeteria. Special Board of Education meeting Wednesday, August 10, 2016, 6:00 PM in the junior senior high school cafeteria. And the regular Board of Ed meeting Wednesday, 08:30, 7:00 PM in the junior senior high school cafeteria.
If there are any of those dates that you, as board members, are not able to come, please let Barbara know so that we make sure we have forums reporting for us.
I should also say for July 6, I am too busy to continue to do the board presidency. So whoever's interested, talk about it. All you are capable of committing.
How many years do you do presidency?
Three.
Nobody's talking.
I would not be at the, I'll take a session.